Before anything else, I would like to open by clapping once. Hello, village masters. Welcome to Pediatric Chiptoos Masters Club, a place where you can learn and have fun as well. And today's theme will be self-care. Have you ever thought that you always forget to take care of yourself? That you always have others to be taught? So you think about others so much that in the end you forget about yourself. So today, we will be talking about how often we think of ourselves. And therefore, I would like to welcome the Toastmasters of the meeting, Toastmasters Vera.
So hello, everyone. My name is Vera. I'm your Toastmaster of the meeting for today. So today, for today's session, our theme is self-care. I love that theme. For me, a great self-care is a great self-care day is where I can indulge in food, I can do activities that I like, and I can use my current shit mask. And because of that, the word of the day for today's meeting is beautify. Now, first, let me call our general evaluator for this meeting. General evaluator?
Yes.
The screen is here.
Okay, thank you, Toastmaster of the meeting, Toastmaster Vera. Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Yeah. Toastmaster of the meeting, fellow Toastmaster and distinguished guests. My name is Ayas, and I'm as general of, general advisor for today. And the purpose of GE is to evaluate everything that takes place through the meeting. During the meeting, I will take notes on everything that happens and doesn't happen. I will evaluate each participant on the meeting program and look for a good example of preparation, organization, delivery, enthusiasm, observation, and performance of the test. But today, I won't be alone. I will be accompanied with my super team who are there. I will calling my super team first. The first one is What is A-N-W-O-D? Please tell us, Toastmaster Lisa. The screen is yours.
Thank you, GE. Good afternoon, Toastmaster. My name is Liza Mawidia. You can call me Toastmaster Liza. I will serve as A-N-W-O-D counter today. As A-N-W-O-D counter, I will count every reputation in our meeting today. And I will count every W-O-D today. Our W-O-D today is beautify, which mean beautify is to improve the appearance of someone or something. So please use our W-O-D today, beautify as much as possible. And I will report all the record at the end of the meeting with the other team. And that's all my role today. Thank you very much. Back to you, GE.
Okay, thank you, Toastmaster Liza. Don't forget to use word of the day, beautify as much as today. Okay, next, the second one is timer. How much, how much timer? How long it's speaker can speak? So please welcome our timer today, Toastmaster Mutia.
Hello, village masters. I'm Mutia, and I will be serving as timer today. And I will take notes of your time when you were delivering your speech. There are three sessions. The first one is prepared speech session. For prepared speech session, the time will be five to seven minutes. So in five minutes, I will have the green background. In six minutes, I will have the yellow background. And seven minutes, red background. So five, green, six, yellow, and seven is red. And for the table topic sessions, the time will be one to two minutes. So one minute will be green background. One minute and thirty seconds will be yellow background. And two minutes will be red background. And for the evaluation session, it will be two to three minutes. Two minutes will be green background. Two minutes and thirty seconds will be yellow background. And three minutes will be red background. Over to you, GE.
Okay, thank you, Toastmaster Mutia. So don't forget about the time, yeah, the speaker, tall speaker. And then, the last but not least, is the double playmaker. So I will call the grammarian and also ballot counter. So please welcome DTM Chahyani. The screen is yours.
Thank you so much, GE. A very good afternoon, fellow Toastmasters. My name is Chahyani. And today, my role is as a grammarian, and I will also be a ballot counter. So firstly, as the grammarian, so everyone, you can beautify our meeting today by making sure that we are mentioning all sentences with the correct grammar. So as the grammarian, my role is going to be a grammar police. Meaning that I will note down any grammatical errors in complete sentences or perhaps misuse of the word of the day today. And I will also note down the beautiful phrases mentioned today, and I will announce them at the end of the meeting. So try our best to utilize the correct grammar as correct as possible, as frequent as possible during our meeting today. And then, next one is the role as the ballot counter. So as a ballot counter, my role is not to beautify any aspects of the meeting today, but to beautify, beautify the cheerfulness of the meeting, I think. Because I'm going to announce the result or the winners at the end of the meeting today in the Hall of Fame. Therefore, everyone needs to chat to me privately to mention the winners or the best speaker in your opinion in every session, in the prepared speech session, table topic session, and evaluation session. You need to chat to me privately, typing the name of the best speaker in your opinion, and then I will cast a vote and announce the result at the meeting, at the end of the meeting today. Back to you, GE.
Okay, thank you, DTM Chahyani. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, that's all from GE team. I hope you can enjoy the meeting until the end. And I will see you, I will see the GE team again after the table topic session. So at the end of the meeting, I will give report. So I will give control back to Toastmaster of the meeting, Toastmaster Vera. The screen is yours.
Thank you, GE and his team for sorry, am I audible enough?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, GE, and all the Toastmasters have to take the meeting rules for today. So for the first session, we'll be having a prepared speaker session. We have one prepared speaker. So to open the prepared speaker session, I will invite the evaluator from Toastmaster Yosa from the Ultimate TMC first. Toastmaster Yosa, the screen is yours. Yes, you're audible and visible.
Good afternoon, everyone. It is my first time in Pediatric Chiptoos Master. It's so good to be here. So I will be the evaluator for Toastmaster Zaki Abdurahman's speech. His project 1.3, research and presenting. The purpose of this project is for the member to learn or review basic research methods and present a well-organized, well-researched speech on any topic. So without further ado, let me call the invisible addiction, Toastmaster Zaki Abdurahman. Toastmaster Zaki Abdurahman, the invisible addiction. The screen is yours.
When we hear about addictions or discuss about addictions, one of the most vivid image may probably be about people who are addicted to drugs or cocaine, how it ruined their life and the pain they are going through in withdrawal and the suffering it brings all around him. But we can, there is another kind of addictions. Like in these recent years, we have found new kind of addictions. DSM-5, which is basically a reference manual for psychiatrist diagnostics, have put gambling disorder as an addiction, as formal diagnostics. And ICD-11 famously in 2018 has make online gaming disorder a formal addiction. So these issues, this phenomenon, new phenomenon has become to be treated seriously because the harm it caused has become serious. And these are all addictions that are nothing, have nothing to do with drug or substance. And it's purely behavior. It's addictive behavior. And that's sadly why we often don't notice these addiction, these problems until we are too late, until it's too late. And we will, we sometimes learn in this hard way. We sometimes see headlines. And for example, the FKA published an article in 2019 about a college student was so addicted to video games, he can even leave for about and they found also many cases like this. And we see sometimes headlines of very young kid, elementary school, spending a lot of monies on a game or people lose hundreds of millions of rubies even for gambling. And these are all can be as severe as drug addiction. It may be even worse. It ruins our life. And the thing is, it's sometimes really unnoticed because the signs may be not as obvious as a drug addictions. And we sometimes forgot to talk a lot more about what really makes an addictions. Because turn out, it actually can apply, can, you can be addicted to many things. And so, there are really several characteristics common to any addictions. Firstly, is what we psychologists call cognitive science. It's when, it's where, it's when the activity or the behavior really makes it really enjoyable, really it become increasing priority over any other aspects of life, and it undermine our ability to be present in the activities we are, should be doing, such as we have concentrating, trouble concentrating on doing task. We have concentrating to do anything. And also, it's really, sometimes they synthesize us because we suddenly find, suddenly many things become not interesting anymore. And the second is the traits that are common to drugs, addictions, which is it, we really can't control that behavior. Every time we feel a desire, we follow it, we really become a person that is really bad at concentrating and maybe procrastinating too much because we can't control, for example, our desire to just watch movies or just play games. And suddenly, it's undermined our life. And the withdrawal symptoms that we really make us really feel uncomfortable when we tried to actually stop doing it. And it never really satisfies because we, in addictions, we always tend to want more and better pleasure. We, we never really satisfied. And it's really dangerous. But it can also happen to a lot of activities. Many people are addicted to games. Maybe many people are addicted to internet or even maybe some people addicted to work. And the problem, the difficult part is actually acknowledging it. Many addicts don't, maybe don't see the addictions behavior as a problem. And it's really, really can be difficult to really look at ourselves and blame our own doings for our misfortunes. But when we feel these problems, we feel our life is really going bad and we start really losing a lot of time, a lot of presence of mind in doing stuff that we should be doing, then maybe we shouldn't overlook this thing because we may as well be actually affected by it. So if we really feel this red flags happening to us or someone goes to us, maybe we should evaluate what we spend with our life and how overall it impacted our life. And we need to be, become able to open with ourselves. Be ready to blame ourselves and change the problems with our own hands. And of course, it's sometimes become a escape for many people who feel their lives is not really good. Sometimes, of course, we feel depressed or lonely, and many people escape to these addictions. But in the end, it's just a vicious cycle that never really give any satisfactions. So I think in living a healthy and balanced life, you know, we need to look more upwards and not to think, not about just the player, the, our enjoyment, but also about how we can be a better person, how can we grow, how can, what can I give, and what can I create? Thank you.
Yay! Thank you, Toastmaster Jackie, for a very interesting talk. I think invisible addiction is a topic that not many people talk about. And what I noticed is the activity that you just introduced to us is actually activity that most people do in their self-care day. So I think you give us an important message that self-care is important, but we have to keep it under control. So that, so that activities that we do on our self-care day did not become an addiction that limited our life. So very thank you to you, Toastmaster Jackie, for the important message. Now, before we move on to the next session, I want to ask our timer, do the speaker eligible for voting?
Yes, the speaker is eligible to be voted.
Okay, thank you, timer. So guys, we move on to our next session. So our second session is about the table topic. So to begin the session, I will invite the table topic master. Toastmaster Adele, are you there?
I'm, yes, I'm here. Am I visible and audible?
Yes, you're visible and audible, Toastmaster Adele.
Okay. Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Adele. Today, my role is to be the table topic masters. And I've already I've already had ten table topics, actually. And every participant who wants to join will be, I will have to choose one of them. And we will give you one to two minutes to deliver your opinion in your speech. So shall we execute this session? Okay. So who wants to join?
I want.
Okay, I have to share my screen first.
Yes, please. Liza, you are behind me. Another one, please.
I'm a third.
Is this a question already? Oh, not yet.
Which one will you choose?
Six, 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 six.
Number six.
Six, thank you.
Okay, this is a quote, "Some things are just better not spread too thin, yourself and peanut butter." So TM Chai, the time is yours.
All right. For all Toastmasters, I would say that I agree with this quote that most of the time, Indonesian people, including me, including you, we always sort of like undermining ourselves. But it is being camouflaged as being humble. So I went to Singapore for a training a couple of years back. And back then, with me, together with me, there was also other fellows from other countries. And one country that has always been prominent everywhere, anywhere I go, everywhere we go, is the Indian. It's not about the race, but it's about the characteristics. That people who came from India, I think they were trained very well to be outspoken, to be remarkable, to be highlighted, to be at the spotlight. I think when it comes to the discussion or argumentation, when I pay attention carefully, what they say, what they share is not really always valuable. Sometimes, we maybe may know better from them. We may read more than them. We may have a better or a stronger opinion compared to them. But again, because of our nature, there is the humility, which we think it beautifies our performance, but it doesn't. So I think Toastmasters has been teaching us to be more outspoken, to be, to have greater courage to share our opinion or our idea in a positive manner. So I agree with this statement that about our performance and about the peanut butter, we may not be too thin. Most of the time, we need to be more outspoken in a really good and positive manner. Back to you, DTM.
Okay, I agree with that. Thank you so much for your sharing, TM Chai. And so, which one behind our TM Chai?
Liza said skip dulu. So I think, I think let's beautify the meeting by having the newcomer, that's the guest, to join the table topic session. So I think Anisha, Anisha, I think you can join this session.
Okay, TM Chai, but I don't know what we already cast because I just joined this part. I'm sorry for being late.
Good.
Okay, okay. So TM Anisha, we are in the table topic session. And we, our meeting topic is about self-care. And I've already prepared ten table topic, and you can choose one of them. And you can deliver a speech about it in one to two minutes. Okay.
Okay.
So really join us.
Okay. Hmm. I'm going to choose number I'm sorry, but in this time, I have to choose one of that number, those numbers or what the rules of this are.
Okay, sorry, my mistake. You have to choose one. Wait, I will share your screen first.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So which one will you choose, TM Anisha? Number six is already taken, by the way.
Okay. I'll just number one.
So this is about saying no can be the best form of self-care. Saying no can be the best form of self-care. TM Chai, TM Anisha, the time is yours.
Okay, thanks for the opportunity. This is actually my first time to speak here. After, it has been a long time I didn't speak in English. So I'm very happy because so many people will help me, will teach me, and we will teach each other here, share our skill here and our experience maybe. So the title is, saying no is the best, one of the best way to our self-care. Actually, I'm the person who really, really hard to say no. Maybe I'm the yes person. So, and I, I really feel trouble with that because sometimes I can do something, but I think it's better to try to do it than make other people disappointed. But being care too much with others makes us careless with ourselves. So by the time I tried to learn how to say no, but not maybe frontally, frontally, but maybe I, I tried to give so many reasons and so many, we can't say like alternative way. And we asked them to change what they want from us. And we can have time for ourselves, but we don't make other people disappointed. So because I think I really agree with the statement is say no or try to say no is one of the best self-care. Because we are only human, we have some like we can't do anything, we have our own barrier for anything. So it's impossible for you to do everything to make everyone happy. But remember, the first, the first things you have to do is make yourself happy first. I think we, it's hard, but we can learn it. Thanks for the opportunities.
Well, that's so true. Thank you for your opinion, TM Anisha. For me, it's too hard to say no too. When, especially when our friends ask us something, yeah. So it is a great speech.
Sometimes we will feel disappointed when, we will feel disappointed when someone say no to us too. So we don't make to, we don't make it to anyone else.
Yeah, 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 agree with that. So next, who, who will join? I, I think TM Liza.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, so let me share the screen first. So number six and number ten, number one is already taken. Which one will you choose?
I choose number eight.
Number eight, okay. So this is about a reminder, don't let thoughts of Monday steal your Sunday. Don't let thoughts of Monday steal your Sunday. TM Liza, are you ready?
Wait, wait, yeah. Okay, I'm ready.
Okay, so TM Liza, the time is yours. Okay, so TM Lisa, the time is yours.
Hello, those master and guests. From Sunday to Monday, just need 1 day. But from Monday to Sunday, it's a long, long day. So, I understand you have a lot to do on Monday. It's time when you need to work out, you achieve all of your target, you running for all the team, but a lot of to do you can do in Sunday. It's beautiful my Sunday model. You can sleep, you can eat delicious food, and you can do anything you want. And you can freely, you can freely your mind, you can make, you can beautify your my, your mind, your day, and your uh, talk from anything. So make your Sunday better, it will make your Monday better also. So in my opinion, a good rest in Sunday, it will benefit for your Monday. I think it all for me. Back to you, Tabletop Master.
Thank you so much, TM Lisa. By the way, I'm sorry everyone, my neighbor is having a car okay? Maybe probably you are hearing it. So yeah, Sunday will beautify our Monday. I agree with that. And yeah, thank you so much, TM Lisa. So let's go to the next participant. We have TM Zaki. Are you ready?
Yes, I am.
Okay, let me share the screen.
Hmm, I...
So TM Zaki, number 1, number 6, and number 8 are already taken. Which number will you choose?
I choose number 2.
Sorry, number?
Number 2.
Okay, number 2. Self-care is giving the world the best of you instead of what's left of you. Self-care is giving the world the best of you instead of what's left of you. Are you ready, TM Zaki?
Uh, I think in 30 seconds.
Okay. Okay, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, self-care is giving the world the best of you instead of what's left of you. TM Zaki, the time is yours.
Uh, in this uh, modern age, uh, many people has become burdened by many obligations or just that uh, by, by, sometimes people not really empowered by uh, jobs or works. We do sometimes, uh, it can be, it can a whole, uh, it can hold us. Some, sometimes it can become uh, it's a burden that's uh, some, uh, sometimes make us really overlook what do we really want to do with our life? What do, uh, what, uh, what, what is our potential? What, what can, what can I do to do, to do world? And I'm, so I agree with this statement because so many ta, so many people have lost uh, the meaning of their life because they're just follow what people told them. Yeah, you know, this, there is a new phenomenon in China, uh, there is movement lying flat. So it's new generations, they just fed up with materialism and about how all we do for life is just for more and more money. And so many people start to deliberately searching for low-paying job or maybe open a simple shop so that they can sit back and relax and see uh, the beauty of life.
Oh, well, thank you so much, TM Zaki. Am I audible, by the way?
Yes, perfect.
Yes, okay, okay. Yeah, thank you so much for your opinion. It's, yeah, I agree with that. So, uh, we, does, do we have any other participant after TM Zaki?
Perhaps DTM Susana or Toastmaster Garda?
Um, yeah, hi. Well, I don't mind trying. I came in, I think, a minute ago and yeah, go ahead.
Hey, thank you so much, Toastmaster Susana. Uh, so I will share the screen first. So, Toastmaster Susana, number 1, number 2, number 6, and number 8 are already taken. Which number will you choose?
Number 4.
Number 4 it is. So, almost everything will work again if you unplug it for a few minutes, including you. Almost everything will work again if you unplug it for a few minutes, including you. Toastmaster Susana, are you ready for that?
So every, almost everything will work again if you unplug it?
Yeah.
Including you, okay.
Okay, Toastmaster Susana, the time is yours.
Thank you very much, uh, Table Topic Master. I agree with this because I think in everything that we do, we really need to manage ourselves. And self-care is very important, even in those masters. So when you are feeling overwhelmed, may it be in a Toastmaster environment or even in your personal life, it's good to just switch off. Of course, switching off does not mean that you switch off for the whole week. Yeah, but you need to really evaluate yourself and be honest. Is it overwhelming? Are you burning out? So for me personally, I normally switch off on the weekends. I limit my Toastmaster meeting to one, once on Saturday and not on Sunday unless it's very necessary. So it's good to just switch off for a while so that you can come back stronger. So yes, I agree. Please do switch off when you need to so that you can come back stronger over to you.
Well done. I agree with that, Toastmaster Susana. Uh, we need to switch off in order to beautify and to be stronger. Uh, so I guess there, we... I guess we have no one, no participant again, or is there anyone who wants to join the Table Topic?
Imandae, I think.
Okay, TM Imandae, do you want to join the Table Topic Master, at Table Topic Session?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so I will share the screen first. So TM Imandae, number 1, number 2, number 4, number 6, and number 8 are already taken. Which one will you choose?
Number 10.
Number 10?
Yes.
Okay. There is no greater wealth in this world than peace of mind. There is no greater wealth in this world than peace of mind. Toastmaster Imandae, are you ready for that?
Um, yeah.
Okay, there is no greater wealth in this world than peace of mind. Toastmaster Imandae, the time is yours.
Uh, thank you for the opportunity. It's my very first time to speak in this Toastmaster Pediatric. And talking about self-care, uh, nothing better than a peace of mind. Yes, I agree with that statement because I think uh, how many wealth that you have, you will never want to change it with a peace of mind. Like when you sleep or when you eat or, and everything you did, everything you do, how many wealth, how many, how much money you have, it's not uh, equal with the peace of mind. Uh, may you just have a little, you just have small, you just have a few. But with the peace of mind, you can uh, co, uh, you can grab it, you can collect, you can have more wealth. But without that peace of mind, you cannot have even a little wealth. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Imandae. Yeah, I agree with that. Especially for us who becoming doctor or already doctors, you know how peace of mind is really important and is the best wealth that we can gain. So I guess there's no one left. There is no one left to join the Table Topic Session. Uh, well, thank you so much for the participants to beautify uh, this meeting. Uh, I will give the meeting or the session back to Toastmaster of the day.
So, back to me. Thank you, DTM, for leading the Table Topic Session. And thank you for selecting a good of both topics for today's speakers. Now, um, move on to the, our last session, the Evaluation Session. Because things that is not measured will not improve. So Evaluation Session is very important. So let me call the General評価委員 for leading this uh, session. General評価委員, the screen is yours.
Okay, thank you, Toastmaster Vera. Welcome to the most important session in Toastmaster, that's Evaluation Session. So I will call my team for, my team. So the first one, yeah, I will call my ANW, ANWOD counter. So please welcome Toastmaster Lisa to give your report about it. The screen is yours.
Okay, thank you very much, GE. Now I will share you my screen. Yeah, this is my report for today meeting. For Toastmaster Vera, you say 5A. Toastmaster Zaki, you say 21A. Toastmaster Adela, you say 2A. DTM Chahyani, you didn't have any A, long pauses, um, repetition. Uh, Toastmaster Anisa, you say 7A. DTM Susana, you didn't have any A, long pauses, um, another. Toastmaster Imandae, you say 5A. And then Toastmaster Ayas, you didn't say any A, long pauses, um, another. And I didn't hear anyone uh, say our WOD today, beautifying. Bring this all, report from me. Back to you, GE.
Okay, thank you, Toastmaster Lisa. But first, uh, I want to ask the timer, how about the timer first for the timer report about the Table Topic Session?
All speakers are eligible to be voted in a Table Topic Session.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Toastmaster Mutia. So ladies and gentlemen, you can choose and decide who is the best Table Topic Session to chat privately to DTM Chahyani. Okay, before that, I'm sorry, I forgot. Uh, I must to, I must evaluate the meeting first and after that, uh, the, the role taker. Okay, the first of all, uh, I give my evaluation from, for this meeting. We, before the meet, uh, before the meeting, I see we start on time the meeting. So congratulation. Sorry, 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 uh, before that, before that, sorry, sorry. Before that, uh, we want to hear, we want to listen to the people association for the prepared, prepare speaking session. So please welcome Toastmaster, you so sorry, sorry, I'm so enthusiastic today.
Thank you, thank you, our GE who are very enthusiastic this afternoon. So I think it's the agenda in parts that the evaluate, the prepared speech evaluator is the last. Okay, so let me begin my evaluation. Oh, sorry, sorry. Let me pin the timer first. Okay, okay. So congratulation, Toastmaster Zaki for finishing your project and then finishing this level, right? Because this is the last project in level 1. Congratulation, Toastmaster Zaki. I am very interested with your topic. It's so different topic with, uh, I visited many clubs, uh, maybe because it's a hospital-based club. So it's such a very health-based...
Toastmaster Yusuf, are you there? Yes, Toastmaster Yusuf is lagging. So, uh, what should we do? Or we can...
We can move on to another report first then?
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Okay, uh, I will, I will continue the report, yeah. Because there is a lagging from Toastmaster Yusuf. Okay, now we can, uh, we want to listen to call Graham Ryan, yeah, Graham Ryan Report. Please welcome DTM Chahyani.
Yay, thank you so much. Okay, so hello, Toastmasters, while waiting for Toastmaster Yusuf to improve his connection, I think. Let's start with the grammatical report, the grammarian report. So I hope everyone is able to see my presentation is very short because I will only focus on 2 aspects in the grammar. So firstly about expressions, firstly it's about the expression. So I know that majority of us are utilizing, utilizing the same or the similar expression. Like, I think, I think, I think. I myself also frequently mention, I think. So there are many other ways to express, I think. For example, like, in my opinion, I believe, I would say, or in my point of view. And then here, from my point of view, as far as I can tell, so I think, oh, now I think. My apology. So because I think it's sort of like, uh, common expression that, that we accustomed to say. Therefore, I myself frequently say this, I think. So let's try to utilize other expressions such as, in my opinion, I believe. To my mind, to my mind is a little bit informal, in my opinion. And then next expression is also therefore. So because many of us mentioned, so therefore, so I think, oh, in my opinion, we can utilize other expressions such as consequently. When I joined the I O L course, consequently, and then in consequence, or for this reason, are the expressions that I believe are easier to utilize and to incorporate in our sentences. So I would suggest the consequently for this reason, in consequence. And then next thing is about, I agree with you. Because like in the Table Topic Session, most of the time, we will reply to the question or to the quote with, I agree. Simply as I agree, that's it. So there are many other expressions that I believe we can use, for example, like, hmm, this one, that's just what I was thinking, or perhaps, I have no objection. I think this is a good one. And, uh, or as casual as this, that's so true, rather than I agree. Because again, majority of us directly express, I agree with that statement. So next meeting, next Table Topic Session, let's try our best to use different expressions just to make our meeting or our statements or our sentences or our responses in the Table Topic Session more valuable, or we are improving in terms of our ability to utilize the expressions or vocabularies. And then lastly, the beautiful phrases mentioned. It is impossible to make everyone happy, that's agreeable, completely agreeable. And then Vera mentioned, things which are not measured are not going to improve. Yes, I found another quote that expressed this idea in a different way, but it means the same. So these are two beautiful phrases mentioned that I think those are the best for today. Back to you, G E.
Okay, thank you, D T M Chai for the grammarian report. Yeah, you have beautified our English language scale. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, then we wa- we move to evaluation session from the speaker. So please welcome Toastmaster Yusuf. The screen is yours.
So sorry, everyone, I have bad connection suddenly. So I must, but the truth is, I must give my evaluation the last year. Okay, so let me repeat my evaluation from the beginning. Congratulations, Toastmaster Zaki. You are finishing your project, your last project in level one. So you are finishing this project. What I like about your speech is maybe because this is a hospital best, um, club, so maybe the topic is so healthy base, is about against addiction. You expand about what against addiction is, what, uh, the similarities with the drug addiction. Because even though it is an invisible addiction, as your, uh, speech title suggests, but it has the same symptom, the same consequences that can occur to the addictive. And then what we should do, uh, to avoid the, the game addiction. And then what I like is you are revering to the paper, if I'm not wrong, yeah? Or journal, it is so new because not many in Toastmaster using the journal or paper. Uh, maybe because back again, it's a hospital best club. Maybe everyone in here is so familiar with paper. So you are using paper and journal best on your research. That's what I like. Because so many Toastmasters are just using like Li or Web, it is not such a strong or best for your research. And then for what you may, you want to work on, uh, is maybe I will suggest that maybe you can try to engage more with your audience. Because what I see is you are just like, read your speech script and then try to end it fast. And then, uh, not try to engage with your audience. Maybe in the beginning, you can try to engage with your audience such as like, uh, asking about how, uh, did you know about the game addiction or how, what do you think about the game addiction? And then maybe you can try to using presentation slides to give us more information, uh, not just to hear your voices. I think that's all for me. Back to you, G E.
Okay, thank you, Toastmaster Yusuf for giving evolution, evolution for the speaker. Okay, wait. Okay, then after G Team, I want to give my general report about this meeting. Okay, first of all, we, about the time, we have start this meeting on time. So congratulations for Pediatric Tipto Toastmaster Club for today. We start at four P M o'clock. Okay, and then after that, yeah, this meeting opening, this meeting opened by very enthusiast Toastmaster of the meeting. So we can enjoy the, what, we can enjoy session by session. So thank you, Toastmaster Vera, for leading us for, in this meeting for today. Yes, yes, okay, the time is color, the color is wrong, yeah? The tool, yeah. And then about, uh, Toastmaster, uh, we, uh, after prepared speech session, we usually, uh, give space time to, for one, one minute of silence. I think it's, it's a good, it is good habit for us to appreciate the speaker. So maybe for the next week, we can do it again and give one minute of sound for the speaker. Okay. Okay, and then for Table Topic Master, I think it's very, very, very good topic about self, self-care. I do like it. And you, you deliver, you lead the, the audience and everyone can participate. It's, uh, quite, quite much, uh, I can't, there, uh, there are six people who participate in this meeting today. Yeah. So it's, uh, I think it's good, very good. And for, for prepared speech session, I think, uh, I do agree because you, you're special today. Yeah, you are the only one who deliver us and the topic is very, very good. It, it's best on the journal. It, so we can, when we listen to your speech, we feel smart. So thank you for your, uh, presenting your speech and congratulations for completing the project one, project one. And then, I think, uh, I would like to say thank you very much to all my team, all, all my role takers. T M Lisa, T M, uh, Mutia and D T M Chahyani, you did very well for today. And I hope we can beautify every day and every week and every meeting, not only this meeting. So I think that's all from me, from G E report back to Toastmaster of the meeting, Toastmaster Vera.
Yay, thank you, G E. So guys, we have come to the end of our session for this meeting today. Truthfully, I really enjoyed this meeting today. It's, this meeting has beautified my evening. And, uh, so I will give back the control to our president. Back to you, Madam President.
Yeah.
You have an invited ballot counter.
Oh, yes, I forgot also. So I'm sorry, I also forget the most weighted, uh, part of Toastmaster, the ballot counter. So, the ballot counter.
That's me.
Oh, yes.
Because Toastmaster Vera is so excited to, about to finish the, the Toastmasters meeting because this is her first time to lead the Toastmasters meeting as the Tom. Right, so for our Toastmasters, to, to beautify our meeting even more today, now we come up to the Hall of Fame Session, yay! So the winners for today, let's start with the best prepared speaker for today. Drum roll, please. The best prepared speaker for today is Toastmaster Zaki, yay! Such a pleasant surprise. Congratulations, Toastmaster Zaki. Look forward for your evaluation speech. We have music, thank you so much. And then next, next one, for the best evaluator for today, drum roll, please. Toastmaster, Yosef, yay! So you are eligible to be voted. And then lastly, the best Table Topic Speaker for today, drum roll, please. Music, where's the music? Perspective Toastmaster, Anisha, yay!
Congratulations.
Congratulations to the winners for today, Toastmaster Zaki, Toastmaster, Perspective Toastmaster Anisha and Toastmaster Yosef. Back to you, Tom.
Yay, now after we have done the Hall of Fame Session, we truly come to the end of this meeting. So I will give back the control to you, Madam President.
Yay, thank you, Toastmaster Vera, who has enthusiastically led the meeting today for the very first time. Congratulations, you did very well. And congratulations for all the best speakers, the prepared speech session and the table topics, especially our guest, future Toastmaster Anisa and as well our visiting Toastmaster from the Ultimate Toastmasters, Toastmaster Yosef. And I would like to welcome our frequent guest here, who has joined our meeting for a very long time, Toastmaster Iman da. Wow, I'm so glad that you're visiting Pediatric Tipto Toastmasters Club almost every week, I guess. Hello, Toastmaster Iman da, are you there?
Yeah, yeah, I'm here.
And I would like to know, is it so fun to join the Pediatric Tipto Toastmasters Club? Because I have always seen you almost every week. How do you feel anyway?
Uh, in my opinion, uh, being here in Toastmaster is one of the self-care for me. That's why I love to, uh, join in Toastmaster Pediatric.
Yes, Toastmaster Iman da, you're so agreeable is Toastmasters Club is a very fun meeting to share our loves and fun. And I would like to welcome Toastmaster Anisa, who is the best speaker for the Table Topic Session. How do you feel on being the best T T speaker, Toastmaster Anisa?
I'm so happy. Honestly, I never tried to be the best or something like that, but I just feel like, uh, so energizing for speaking English this afternoon. Thanks. You guys, uh, boosting my mood. Thank you.
Yes, you're very welcome, this future Toastmaster Anisa. Just did great for letting your ideas out and your honesty truly reaches us so that we think that you're the best T T speaker today. And I would like to welcome, this thing is Toastmaster Susanna from Lab One Toastmasters Club. Would you like to tell more about your clubs?
Oh, oh, definitely. Thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. Uh, actually, Lab One Toastmasters is in Malaysia. And I saw your announcement, uh, that you were having your meeting at five. So I have never attended the Toastmaster meeting in the evening. So this is my first experience. So thank you very much for publishing your club, your club meeting. And I've been a Toastmaster for coming more than ten years. So imagine ten year, more than ten years, and this is the first time that I attended a club meeting at five o'clock because we are one hour. So now it's coming to six and then you're wrapping up your Toastmaster meeting. So it was a wonderful meeting. I enjoyed myself, even though I came in late. I just realized, oh my God, I was supposed to, you know, join you half an hour. I was late for half an hour. Uh, but nonetheless, I will definitely, uh, uh, join again if you don't mind. And I think the timing, the timing is good for me as well. Because our meetings in Lab One is always on Friday night at seven thirty. So you, so having a meeting at five, you, after a long day, you energize yourself and then you go home. So now actually, I'm in the office. So congratulations again to all of you for having such a wonderful, wonderful meeting. I had a great time. Over to you, President.
Yeah, you're always welcome to be here. This thing is this one, Susanna. Is it green, which meantime plus seven or plus eight? Uh, I see, see, guys, Lab One Toastmasters Club always have this meeting on Friday night at seven. And I would like to thank Toastmaster Yosef for being an evaluator here. Hello, Toastmaster Yosef.
Hello, Toastmaster Mutia. I am driving, so I cannot turn on my video. But it's so much a pleasure that, like Toastmaster Susanna said, it is a good hour, not too late at night to have a meeting. I would like to come back again to Pediatric if it's possible, if I have not meeting in that day. Thank you.
Yay, thank you, Toastmaster Yosef. So guys, Toastmaster Yosef is from the Ultimate Toastmasters Club. It is always on Tuesday at seven P M, if I'm not mistaken, as I've always visited on the Ultimate Toastmasters Club. And I would like to thank Toastmaster Lisa. I've always been a frequent guest at the Hansman Indonesia Toastmasters Club. Hello, Toastmaster Lisa.
Hello, Toastmaster Mutia. Nice to meet you again.
Would you like to promote your club?
Yeah, okay, maybe if everyone of you want to visit our club, Hansman Indonesia Toastmasters Club, it's conducted every Saturday at three thirty P M Indonesian time. So if you're interested, you can contact me and you visit our club. Thank you very much, Toastmaster Mutia.
Yes, uh, so hello, Toastmasters. Hansman Indonesia has always the full prepared speech session on Saturday at three thirty P M. And I see that Toastmaster Gerda is home safe and sound and I haven't seen him for a very long time. Hello, Toastmaster Gerda.
Hello, Toastmaster Mutia and Pediatric Tipto. Thank you so much for having me and all of us today. I'm so sorry for coming late as well. I'm so sorry for coming late as well, because I was driving my way, on my way back home. Yes, thank you so much, arriving home now safely and sound. Um, it's been a while, I attended, uh, pets' meeting. So it's been, um, quite an honor as well for me to spend this wondrous Monday afternoon. To hear sort of euphonious voices from all of you today. Thank you so much, Toastmaster Mutia.
As, so, 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 is the president of SCBD Toastmasters Club, which meeting is on Friday, wow! We have a, we have a Friday meeting as well, Friday at seven P M. And SCBD is always full of guests, and you're always welcome to come to SCBD Toastmasters Club. And I see the guys here, Toastmaster Meta. Hello, Toastmaster Meta.
Hey, everyone, uh, first, uh, so sorry, because, uh, for coming late today. Uh, actually, uh, and it's too late, because I missed, uh, the topic speaker. Uh, but it's okay, maybe, uh, I can do next time, but I've, uh, after several times to join this meeting. Actually, uh, I have enjoyed this meeting, uh, it's so nice to having new friends in every meeting. Uh, and then it's always, uh, and it's also nice to hear the topic from the speakers. But, but it's too late, uh, for the, I sat here, because I'm too late for coming. Uh, but that, that's all, but actually, I'm enjoying, actually. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome, to, to, Future Toastmaster Meta, you're still at the hospital, aren't you?
Yes.
You're still at the hospital?
Uh, yeah, actually, yes, so sorry, that's why I'm coming late.
No worries, uh, you still have time for coming to pets, because I'm still in a hospital as well. And, yes, yes, and I would like to have the table topic session, disable topic, I mean. Thank you voters, session, favorite taking. Session, Toastmaster Ayas, if you mind helping me to take a picture.
I can assist also, so what's the pose?
Do you have any ideas, DTM Chai?
Beauty, Vera, what's the, how is the pose? Beautify. How, I asked? Beautify, how is the pose, beautify? Like this? Okay, like this, beauty, alright, beauty for Zaki, beauty.
Beauty, 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 handsome, handsome.
Alright, and three, two, one. Another pose for beauty, beautify. Beauty, three, two, one. Excellent, yay! Thank you so much, I will share to the group.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Toastmaster Chahyani. So everyone, do not forget to renew yourself as a Toastmaster, this is now twenty-seventh of September. And for the guest, you're always welcome to be a Toastmasters member. You can reach me at the Instagram, Pediatric Tipton Toastmasters Club. To be a Toastmasters, because you'll have so many benefits in joining as a Toastmasters. So I guess that's all from today, and I would like to adjourn the meeting by clapping, tries.